Agenda review. Anybody having that?
I have.
Go ahead.
I wanted to add CBI-F1 for our first reading. We had it in our packet, but it didn't make the list of the CBI-F1. So when we were talking about the CBIs.
Is that a first reading?
A first reading.
Anybody else have anything? Okay.
Yes. Minutes from 11:04 or 25.
Anything else? All right. Take a PTA is not here. All right, public comment? All set? Report superintendent?
Yes, so the first thing I want to talk about is policies. So we had, we held a half day policy review meeting to evaluate our current policies, identify ones that were outdated, determine which policies need to be rescinded or added. We have a plan moving forward, so over the next few months, you're going to see that you're going to be receiving a lot of policies. And then you'll be able to just discuss them, Mary's on the committee, Heather's on the committee, I'm on the committee, we can have other committee members that will be there that we can answer your questions about it. But the plan is if we, if we continue down the path that we are, to have all of our policies up to date by the end of the school year. Because we have quite a few of them to go through, but we'll have them all done by the end of the school year. So that's the goal for us this year. November 20th, with the support of the police department and our amazing kitchen staff, we were able to serve Thanksgiving lunch to our students. I truly enjoyed the opportunity working alongside the kitchen staff and serving the students. While some students seemed a little surprised that I was the lunch lady, because they said, "Don't you run this school back?" And I said, "Yeah," and they go, "And you're a lunch lady." And so apparently I did such a great job that they invited me back the next day, because they were short staffed, so they called and they said, "Hey, we're short staffed, can you come work in the lunchroom?" The next day, and then they hired someone, and I asked them if they needed me to come and train her. So it was, it was good, it was fun. Then the fun began on December 1st, bringing in our, the 1st of December, our water heater burst, causing water to flow into the kitchen area. The, the fire department was called in to assess, assess the situation. We adjusted the day by serving breakfast and lunch in the cafeteria, because they couldn't use the lunchroom. The, a huge thank you to the kitchen staff, Brad and the fire department. Erin came as well to us help assess, get the call early in the morning. But, you know, for working together to keep our school running smoothly, so we were able to open that in the morning. One of the things that I thought was absolutely amazing is that when I asked, like the fire department was here for, for quite a while, and I was surprised at that, and I thought, oh boy, there must be more problems, right? Because you think water going into the stove, going into the, you know, their ovens or what's going on. They were actually here, using their machines, cleaning the water. So I have never seen that ever occur. So I was, another reason why I thought, wow, this is really a great place to work and to live, because everybody takes part in what's going on in the school. And it was, there was probably what, five or six of them in there cleaning out the, the kitchen and the water, so it was really nice.
Like running the pipes?
They, well, they were, from the water leak all over the floor, so they had, they were sucking all the water off. So instead of our crew having to do the.
Oh, okay, I, well, I thought they were cleaning the wa, like cleaning the pipes.
No, they were cleaning the water off of the floor and stuff, so.
Okay.
That was, it was really fabulous just to see everybody working together to do that.
Very nice.
So the goal was to have the, well, I'll just let me step back. The water heater itself is, was approximately 40 years old, and the bottom fell out from underneath it. Usually they do a small leak, but it wasn't, the bottom. But fortunately, this only affected a small portion of our school building, so we were very lucky with that. The goal was for them to come in on Tuesday, which would have been December 2nd, to install the new one. So November 2nd, uh, December 2nd, I'm sorry, December 2nd came, which was a snow day. The water heater did arrive as, as scheduled. Unfortunately, when they were taking it off of the truck, they damaged it. So they couldn't use that water heater, so they had to bring that water heater back. And they said they were going to come in on December 3rd. So to top off December 2nd, that evening, our fire alarms started going off. It triggered our fire alarms to go off. They couldn't be turned off, so the fire department had to shut down all of our fire alarms, the entire system in our building. When they do that, no one can leave the building unattended until they're back up and running. So Erin and Brad had to save with the, the building until Brad could get ahold of someone to help him go through, how to bypass that one section that was causing the error. And so they were able to do that, so the fire system was back up and running. So they had somebody come out today to assess that. So today, on the 3rd, we had the water heater brought in. It is now installed, it's done. So our wa, new water heater is up and running, and it's working, so that's good.
Floor's washed.
Floor's, everything's clean, everything's great, yes. The alarm, the alarm company came in today, and they looked at, it was a heat detector that was, that was affected by the water, that, that was going off, making the alarm beep and make all kinds of great noises. The technician came out, checked it out. Apparently, they had the heat, the, the heat detector in the ceiling, so if you have any water leak, it's going to go in there. So he's actually coming out on Friday to fix it, and what he's going to do is he's going to take it, he's going to put it on the wall, so it won't be on the ceiling anymore. So, um, so he came out today and assessed for what was needed, and we'll have that fixed on Friday. So it's been a really busy beginning of December, needless to say, so. But everything's golden, we're good now, we're ready to move forward.
Fantastic. Do we have a warrant for water here? Now we can cross that one off.
That's all you have?
That's all I have, I know.
Students' first report, I think we have it right here.
Yeah, if you have it with Carol, who's not here today, then if you had any questions on, on any of it. One of the big differences, number five, is that our New Hampshire DOE Special Ed compliance rate over 98% compliant, which is really good. You don't usually see that in schools. That means everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing, so that's amazing. Nobody's making any shortcuts.
Questions? Go to the comments.
Great that the pair of professionals completed their CPI training, so we'll move along on that.
Yes, yes.
Principal's report.
Hello. Do you want to have mine?
Yes.
Quarter two, I'm also still, is off to a strong start, positive start. Students and staff are settling into their routines, and teaching and learning continue to be engaging, collaborative, and productive. On November 7th, we had our Veterans Day assembly. For all students and staff, we actually had two assemblies. We were honored to welcome guest speaker Sean Welch and our mentor. He shared his experiences and reflections on service to our school community. His message was meaningful and well received, and we are grateful for the time he dedicated to our students. Classrooms also engaged in Veterans Day themed lessons throughout the week, helping students further understand and appreciate the significance of service sacrificed in the community. On November 13th, the eighth grade hosted a fundraiser night at the Poor People's Pub. Thanks to the proceeds from food sales, raffle baskets, and ticket sales, the event raised approximately $2,500 to support the eighth grade class. We're incredibly appreciative of the family, staff, community members, and students who contributed their time and energy to make the event successful. I don't know if that, that was a big turnout. The turnout enthusiasm showcased the strength of the personal community. Today, the eighth grade students helped unload the recent points from the Moses fundraiser. Now that was fun to watch. So the truck pulls up, and of course, the snow last night, right? So they're, they're tromping, because they know they're tromping through the halls, and here, here is Ron and I with Mops as they walk by. You know, because they're, they're tramping so much, carrying these big boxes of recent points, and we don't want anyone to fall. They did a great job, they brought them in, they got them organized, that was great to see. Tomorrow night, our music department has their holiday concert, featuring students in grades one through three, along with a band and chorus. The event is always wonderful, opportunity for students to showcase their hard work and the school growth. I got to attend their dress rehearsal today, they were absolutely adorable. So we're looking forward to celebrating the season together as a school community. We've got some history plans coming up. As we move further into quarter two, remaining focused on maintaining safe, supportive, and engaging learning environment for our students. Thank you to the staff for their continued dedication into our families, for their ongoing partnership in helping our students grow academically, socially, and emotionally.
Questions? Thank you. Frances?
Well, Michelle's not here. She's working, getting, trying to get things caught up. She's over at the SAU, so I'm surprised she's not, she must have lost her at the time, so. Maybe she'll come running in here shortly. Now, can you see if she, if she has a report? Thank you. If you want, we can just look at her for now, if we need to go to enrollment.
All right, enrollment?
Doesn't look like much has changed.
No. I did have one parent reach out to me today of an eighth grade student that wants their child to come back from homeschool.
Consent agenda.
I make a, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Prognosis? Meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve Wakefield School Board public minutes of 11:1825, without any amendments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve Wakefield School Board public minutes of 11:0425, without any amendments.
I'll second that.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business? Uh, procedures? What page is that?
Sixty-one D1.
Go ahead, Donna.
So the, the, the two procedures that you'll see for A and B, these are procedures that we need to have in place. These are for the federal compliance procedures. So these are what the state will look at when they come out for inspection. We did not have these procedures currently, so these procedures were put together. What I did is I reached out to the state of New Hampshire, and I said, "Can you please send me one that, you know, one that you have, and we can look at and make it fit into our needs? Because we want to make sure when they come out, that they say, okay, yes, you do have it, check the box, right? I don't, I don't want them to come and say, here's all the things that you guys need to do. I would rather have them come out and say, okay, you guys got all of this stuff, here's some of the things that you may need to do." So that's what this is. So this is strictly for federal funding. Both of the A and B are for federal funding. And what I did is I reached out to this, like I said, the state, but Michelle had her eyes on it, Brad had his eyes on it, I had Title I staff look at it, I think that I sent it to administration. So everybody looked at this, you know, to, to say, yes, this meets the needs of our district, and we, you know, made some changes in it that we needed to. But this goes along with our school policy DAF, which is, which is in regards to federal funding.
And this is strictly for federal funds?
Yes, it's federal funding purchasing procedures.
Yep.
If you remember when we did the draft in the beginning of the year, you, you have to sign off, or Bob has to sign off on that document, that says, here's the things that you guys have in place. And I said to you, you, there's some of the procedures that we currently don't have that we need to make sure that we have. These are two of them, these are the two. So once we have these two in place, we meet the guidelines for that, as well as for the states when they come on and do their investigations.
And it was, we didn't have anything.
I could not.
On file for this?
I could not find.
Not anything, no.
Not for federal funds.
Yeah, that seems silly, because, I mean, we used to have an actual grant manager before. It wasn't, and it was many years ago, it wasn't very effective, but we had one.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then I know that we've had, like, we've signed off on other policies, I thought, with all the purchasing in it, because.
So we do have some that, some of our policies, but it's for purchasing of stuff that's not grant related.
Right, yeah.
And so they could have, they could have. Policy DAF.
Right.
Right, and so your DAF policy has this in here, so we have the policy, but we don't have the procedure to go along with the policy.
Okay.
So that's what this is. Typically, you don't have to bring a procedure to the board, but I, I like to bring these forward for you guys to view them, to look at them, and then put on there the date that you guys approved them. And I put these on our website, so that way, anyone that wants to know, what is our procedures for X, Y, and Z, they can look on there and find them.
Thank you.
What do we need to do for this?
Just to, if, just to prove it.
Question. Silly question. Who is our grants manager?
That would be me. So this, so this.
We had many discussions about who actually.
Yes.
Before you, who actually manages?
So anything district wide is ultimately my responsibility, right? So anything that happens in the district is my responsibility. Certain things like IDEA, which is special ed, Carol will write in what, what the needs are in the grant, but it's after having discussions with me about it, and she writes it in. But the final approval that says who approves the grants, it would be me. So the grants go to, they, they fill it out, then they come to me, and I have to approve them. So I would be the one that would be approving any grants that are being used.
Thank you for that statement, that you're aware that everything falls under you. That's amazing. Anyway. Yeah. I also have one more question. On page sixty-two, B3, and this is a nitpicky thing, it says, "The purchasing agent may require," which I realize that that is you or your designee, but everywhere else in this, it just says, "The superintendent or designee." So why not just say that? Because everybody's reading it going, wait, who's the purchase agent?
We, I can make that, I can make that adjustment.
I said, nitpicky, but.
No.
It just will read more clearly for everyone.
Change it to the superintendent or designee.
Because that's what.
That's the jury.
Yeah, I'd like to have it consistent.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the federal funds purchasing procedures with corrections.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one, Donna?
So starting on page seventy is inventory management procedure. Again, this is for state funded, state and federally funded equipment. So technically, what the, what the state says is, anything that is purchased through state funding is supposed to be labeled. So you're supposed to have, put a label on it that says, "This was purchased by Title I funds, this was purchased by Title IV funds." And you're supposed to inventory it. So if the state comes out and they say, "We want to see an inventory of any computers that were purchased with state funding," they know if we purchased computers or not. Now we need to provide them with that inventory. So we've been working really hard at making sure that we're labeling anything that's coming in, that's equipment, that we need to do that. Like, for instance, the playground that was outside, that was outside, that has to be labeled, that says property of, you know, it's property of the, the district, but it also has to stay on there, what title grant that it was paid through. This is also, if we had other schools, so an example would be, if you have a, a school within your region that qualifies for title funding, which we do have some, and they, so we have to provide them with some of our title money under the law. But any equipment that we, that they purchase under Title I is still the property of us, of the Wakefield School District. So technically, what's supposed to happen is it's supposed to come here, we're supposed to label it that says, "Property of the Wakefield School District, purchased with, with Title I funds" or whatever, and then we bring it to them, but we inventory it. And if they choose to not use it or get rid of it, they are entitled, they have to give it back to us. They can't just get rid of it or sell it. And so that's, that's what all this is doing. This is taking all of this stuff and putting it all together. Again, this is one of those procedures that we didn't have in place, that we really need to look at, and, you know, like Jeff right now is really working hard inventorying computers. Some of them may have been purchased by Title I, we're trying to, or Title I funds, we're trying to figure out if any were. You know, even IDEA, right, you buy them for special ed kids, you're supposed to follow the same procedures to make sure they're labeled and inventoried, and we have an inventory checklist.
We had, um, for the library, they got the new barcodes and scanners and things like that. I thought they were going to do the same thing for the grant items, is that something, will that work?
I can look into that, I'm, I know, I'm not sure. I can look into that to see if that's.
No, I think, um.
The little handheld scanners?
Yeah, I think of the, everything new will be electronically inventoried, I think that's what.
Yeah, that's what we've been trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, because there is a policy, I forget which one, that inventory has to be done every year, so in all, in all the classrooms and everything, and it would make it easier, you know, having it.
Yeah, exactly.
Polated, having it electronic, yeah.
Well, and then the other piece that goes along with that, you, each, like, each computer is for a specific person.
Yep.
Right? So having an inventory to know that, so if we have a student that damages it, we are, we currently have someone that has broken their computer. So we follow through with what we say we're going to do, and so we reached out, Melissa reached out to that parent and said, "You got to pay for this."
Yep.
And so the parent is coming up with a payment plan with Melissa to pay for the, the device, right? But how we do that is through inventorying that this belongs to this student, and, you know, that type of stuff. And putting it on, so that way, the other thing that Jeff has done is, he can locate laptops, like when they were last turned on, so he can see if it's, you know, if it's, "I don't have it," but yet he can see, "Oh, really? Because that's your house." You know, so. So we're really trying to move forward. He did have, like, right now, because of course, right, when it rains, it pours. So the other piece right now we're looking at is what's wrong with our network? Because we just had a brand new network put in by a, a company, and switches are going bad, and the switches are not even a year old yet, so we're looking at what's going on. So it caused us not to have internet today here at our office, for the, all of the SAU, but part of the elementary school is now down, they don't have internet, right? And so we have to replace those switches, but Jeff's currently looking at, okay, well, these, it says that they're warranted for two years, we bought them a year ago, so now we're digging through the paperwork to find that, to say, these need to be fixed for nothing.
So it starts, so when they put a two year warranty, when I knew it was there.
I'm hoping so. It should, it should, so.
And I have a question, so who keeps track of, of the inventory, like a manual and stuff like that? Who's, is it one particular person that's going to be in charge of that? So my, my question is, so if something comes out of inventory, or is deleted, or laptops, let's say, are no good any longer, they, they come out of that inventory, who's in charge of doing that?
So Jeff takes care of technology.
Every department has its own area for that?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go another one, so if, if we remove the playground, playground, who is in charge of that? That would be Brad?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'll, it'll be housed at a central location, right? It'll have one inventory where everything is located, so that way, because again, right, it's my responsibility to make sure I oversee this inventory list, and if I have one here, one here, one here, right? We need to have.
It never gets updated, right?
And then, you know, in years to come, it's still there, and, and people can find it. That's why it's so important to have these things, like these things online. You know, when, when you look at our website, one of our policies you'll see that we're, that we're looking at doing is, it says that you have to have your policies online. Well, we already have them on our website, but one of the other pieces that we're looking at is, we, we might make it so that we, it has, it says, "Policies, procedures." So here's all your policies for A, here's all your procedures for A. And so all these procedures will go where they need to go. So anybody that wants to know what this procedure, they can look just under procedures, instead of trying to scan through everything to try to figure it out.
All right, any more questions on that? You need a?
Yeah, I'd like to have a vote on it, I'd like to have your approval.
Anyone?
I make a motion to approve the SAU 101 inventory management procedures for state and federally funded equipment.
I'll second.
Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Policies.
Well, the, the data governance manual, we have one more.
We didn't get that in our.
I was going to say, I think, I think, I just noticed it wasn't in your packet, was it sent? Had it, because it's a really thick.
I didn't, I see it, tried to read.
So let me, let me, if we, you want to table this for the next meeting, and then I can just figure it out? Because I thought it was sent to you, I thought I sent it to you prior to, but it was very, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of pages.
I don't remember.
Done of a story anyways, I guess I'll.
Yeah, I would rather you all, yeah, we'll table it and we'll get it in.
Uh, I make a motion to table the data governance manual to our next meeting. Oh, it wasn't an email. Um, oh, it is from Asia.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because I did click on it, and I went, and I went, oh.
There's a lot.
That's a lot, and I don't have time to read that.
It's ti, it's tiny, tiny, too.
I didn't see. Yeah, it's fifty-eight pages.
I'll second the motion. Anybody have any comments on that for next, next meeting? Donna, okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll follow this. All right, we have a couple second readings, a couple extended and first readings.
On JFAD, I, I read my packet late, I admit, this copy that we have does not reflect the changes that we made in the committee. This is still the one that we looked at last time and sent back to the committee. So I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Okay. I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Policy, second reading, policy BETG.
I will make a motion to approve the policy BETG.
Sorry, just a few minutes. Go ahead, Donna.
I just wanted to say, that was, there was a question I know Mary had asked about the hours, it was like a seventy-two hours or something like that, and I did send the response to everyone.
Yep.
That Will had said, yes, it, that is what it is, it is seventy-two hours. I just wanted to remind everyone why that went down.
There a motion?
I make a motion to approve policy BETG minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Is it okay if I just go through?
Go ahead, you can.
Okay. I make a motion to rescind policy BBBB board membership.
I'll second that. Why do we rescind it? These, these are all. Just not needed. Really old and no longer NHSBA policies, they're either redundant, they're, they're, they're not needed, let's put it that way.
Called a really big cleanup, you'll see more on the next.
Yeah, I'm glad. I was like, there's literally seventy-five mandatory ones. I've got book this baby.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to rescind policy BETG dash R, access to minutes of the public records.
I'll second that.
Comments, questions? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, just that, that was, um, it's in incorporated, condensed into another policy, so it's just for.
These are pretty old policies, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, at Mary's point, a, a lot of them have been.
Merged, merged, they merged.
Other policies, exactly.
I make a motion to rescind policy CBB, yearly vacations and holidays.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to rescind policy GBC, employee compensation.
I will second that.
Motion second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to rescind policy GBGAH, HIV AIDS policy.
I second that.
And this is in another policy, it's merged.
Yes.
It's not separate any longer.
Motion in a second, comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to rescind policy GBH, anti-nebantism policy.
I second that.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye. I make a po, I make a motion to rescind policy GCAA, highly qualified teachers.
I will second that.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to rescind policy GCQF, dismissal before contract expiration and non-renewal.
I second that.
Motion in a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to rescind policy LKA, legislator representative.
I'll second that.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a bunch of first readings.
Yep.
You can continue, Mary, if you like.
Okay. Um, policy ACF, food and nutrition services, anti-discrimination and civil rights complaints.
I have a question, do you want us to tell you that when it gets captured for second, what we're looking at for the changes?
Yeah, because they're not highlighted, are they?
Yeah.
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 Because we wanted to get these two, we actually met today, so we wanted to make sure we could go along with how we wanted to by the end of the year, so...
Absolutely. All right, so I'll second it.
Oh, no, there's, no, that's right, we don't have to.
Right. Just for first reading, yep.
Comments on that one?
So, so the, the, and Heather, you can always... That we're looking to adopt the New Hampshire School Board Association policy on this one. The change would be the language in the first paragraph.
What page do you want, please?
Ninety-five.
Thank you.
So we had the changes, the first paragraph, yep.
Moving on, um, policy ACN, so first reading, nursing members accommodation.
Page one hundred. Page one hundred. So this one again, we'd like to adopt the NHSBA, and the changes really are tied to, you know, Title IX gone back and forth with the language of the Title IX. So these are changes with the latest Title IX.
Um, we actually have a nice room for, a nice private room for moms.
Good, good.
Seven. Uh, policy BBAA, first reading, policy development, adoption and review.
Okay, Mary? Page one oh seven.
Go ahead, Donna.
So on this one, we're gonna be adding section F from New Hampshire School Board Association, and, and section H. So the, we have to change the numbering around, and I think there's some formatting issues that we needed to do. And you can, when you look on it, you'll see like there's things crossed out on here that should have just been taken off versus just there. As well as, there's a part in here that says our policies need to be found on our website, which is not in ours, and it is in New Hampshire School Board Association. So we're just cleaning this one up and putting in the, the language to go along with New Hampshire School Board Association. Thank you.
Okay. Policy BBAA, board member authority. On page one thirteen, first second reading.
We were just looking to adopt the NHSBA version, as ours is long outdated.
Yeah. Um, policy BBC, first reading for board member of district office, officer designation.
So on this one, we're, the only change is, it basically was almost a typo when this was done. In the last letter on page one sixteen, the letter F, we're just adding, um, the RSA number. So RSA sixty-seven thirty-three.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would like to make a motion that we waive the second reading and adopt the policy with that change.
It's the same exact policy.
It's the exact same.
Where it says, "An applicable law," they don't say what that applicable law is, and it's actually RSA. So we're just adding the RSA, that's the applicable law.
That's the only change.
Oh, I'll second.
Just question, any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna make that the final.
So, so we...
Yes.
I'm...
I will find one, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have to make a, um, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve policy, uh, BBAA. School, school board member authority.
So we run, yeah, we're...
Okay.
DBCC.
Oh, sorry, DBC. We're on with that.
I will second that. That was the resignation.
Rather than designation one, I'm, I'm so sorry.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. DBC, okay. Uh, policy CA, first reading, administration goals.
Questions on that? Good, Mary?
We're just looking to adopt the NHSBA version.
On page one twenty.
Yep.
Yep, yep. Um, policy CB dash R, first reading, duties of the superintendent.
Last updated in two thousand? So, I bet you can guess what I'm gonna say next, we're going to look at adopting the NHSBA plan. God, that's even before me.
Well, I was gonna say, and as you can see, there are a lot more has changed.
Yeah.
It might have some important information in it.
This would have been a good one to have.
Yeah, probably.
Actually, I, I want to say it was done about three years ago. So, some of the policies that were done were, um, not uploaded or they disappeared.
Asia went, yeah, Asia went through like some of the old files to see if she could find any that she thought may have been done. And so, you know, there was some that she was able to find, and we uploaded them to the website. Because what we were doing is, we were looking at the book, we were looking at the website, and we were looking at the New Hampshire School Board Association. And we had a spreadsheet that we were kind of following along with, and that's how we were trying to figure it out.
Thank you. So we should, do we want a motion?
To...
Waive the second reading and adopt it?
Well, go ahead.
I thought that was what Heather was doing.
Oh. I, I can certainly do that, I wasn't gonna do it with this one, but okay.
Oh, I thought that's what you just told me, that you were...
No, no, no.
Did you guess what I'm gonna say? I was like, "Oh, you're gonna adopt it now?"
I'm happy to adopt it now, but it's, but I figured we'd give people time to...
No worries, I thought that soon.
No, I...
We wouldn't have to bring up for the second reading if we do that.
Right.
Go ahead, Heather. How'd you make a motion?
I thought she was going to.
I will, I will make a motion to waive the second reading of, wait, where am I? CB...
Dash R.
R, CB dash R.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Then I make a motion that we adopt CB dash R.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Um, policy...
Page one twenty-five.
CBI, evaluation of, of the superintendent.
So here, just looking at adopting the NHSBA version.
Okay.
Is this the...
Donna has a question.
Go ahead, Donna.
So I just, I just wanted to add, so one of the things that we talked about is that I know right now you guys are trying to, like, figure out, what do we do for an evaluation for the superintendent? So the next ones, what we're saying is, like, including that one, that, let's just use this one while we start to get through the process, right? Figure out, and if you, if we have to, you know, throw this one out next year, and then we throw this one out, we put the newer one in.
I think we've said that every year.
Well, this, at least this would be one that's in the air. It's from the New Hampshire School Board Association.
And I really, we're just talking about CBI, but in a moment, this tightens in, we're gonna get to CBI F1, which is the evaluation form and goal-setting form. And we've been playing with a lot of different templates and looking at a lot of different things, but perhaps for now, the best course of action is just to go with the NHSBA one. Until we get our strategic plan, and then we can go to trying to tailor our form to our plan.
To our right.
Absolutely. So that's, that...
Better for our district to do it that way.
Mm-hmm. All right, so CBI...
Yeah, so that was just the first...
Just the NHSBA version.
Yep. And we have, um, sorry?
Go ahead.
Are we ready to, but, because I have CBI dash R.
Yes, and we're...
First reading.
We're looking, well, actually, we talked about this this morning, we're looking at rescinding that, because it really just restates CBI. Or now contradicts CBI in a way, so we were looking at rescinding CBI dash R. Oh, okay. Which I guess we can do, yeah, because it's right now.
The same.
Yeah. So, I make a motion that we rescind...
One's got four, one's got seven, but it's important, so...
I, you will notice this also says that the Milton School Board will develop a evaluation.
That's fantastic.
If we do this, because we're gonna adopt the...
Oh, so it'll have it, okay, I'm good.
So, um, if you look at the Wakefield School Board, page one twenty-five has like four, um, the policy CB, CBI dash R, on page one twenty-seven has like seven, um, things to evaluate on. But we will be adopting, um, New Hampshire School Board Association policy of CBI on page one twenty-six in the packet, so that, that has ten. So just so people, we're not, um, doing less.
Right.
Correct. So...
Actually doing more.
By, yeah, by rescinding this one, it's not less.
Okay. And the policy reflects, and I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but the admin role for superintendent duties, three oh two?
Yeah.
Three oh something?
Three hundreds?
Three hundreds, yeah.
So are we taking out CBI dash R, are we rescinding that now?
We're gonna rescind that, okay, so I, I made a motion to rescind CBI dash R.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So then we've got the...
CB, CBI dash F1 is the evaluation form. And this is the New Hampshire School Board Association form. So this is what we're gonna use for this year, and then...
Two years, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I think even the policy in New Hampshire School Board Association, i- if you cannot answer, then you don't put a score.
Yes.
That's what their policy says.
All right, so we wanna make a motion to approve that, so we can use that?
Um, you'd have to waive the...
I make a motion, we've looked at this a lot over the last...
Couple meetings, yeah.
Couple meetings, so I will make a motion to waive the second reading on SBI dash F1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make, I'll make a motion to a, uh, approve the policy CBI dash F1, superintendent evaluation and goal-setting form.
Do we just do that?
No, just...
No, waive the second reading.
Oh, and now we're approving it?
Yeah.
Yep, I'll second that.
Did I say approve?
You did, you did it right.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we, yeah, we should be good to go on that one. Again, it's been, we've been looking at it for weeks and weeks, so... Um, policy DID, fixed assets, first reading.
So this is one I had spoken to you about earlier, we wanna adopt New Hampshire School Board Association, because you'll see, it's, the New Hampshire School Board Association talks about the same thing, but it also says, you know, for, um, grants, you have to follow DAF. So that's what, this is the one that I was talking about earlier. Pretty amazing, these policies haven't been updated for so long. Oh, two thousand twelve, yeah.
Two thousand twelve. I might have missed more policies than they were. You know? Well, what happens, because when the, you know, when we have the updates, and the law has changed kind of quite often with the different administrations. So we have to go back, we have to correct the, the law. We have to correct the policies that, you know, where the law changes, so it's a lot.
Oh, we gotta approve the auditors? I don't think we've ever approved the auditors.
The what? I don't know.
The voices select the auditors, are hearing the recommendations from the superintendent, or this is an administrator?
Oh, that's strange, isn't it? Okay, um, policy DIE, first reading audits.
So this one, there's no change to the language of the policy, it's just that it has changed from a recommended to a required by law. So I would like to just reaffirm this one at this point.
Okay.
But I assume we have to waive the second reading and then reaffirm it, like we've been doing. So, so I will make a motion to waive the second reading on DIE.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will make a motion to reaffirm DIE.
I'll second.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you have something, Donna?
No, after that, after you guys, it was good. One of the things, too, that we had talked about when, when looking at our, our policies, um, I noticed that we don't have on our policies, whether they're required by law, or they're optional, or they're, you know... And so one of the things that we're going to do is, we're gonna actually go through them and put on our policies that are on our website, which ones are, you know...
Yeah, required by law, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be similar to what you see on the New Hampshire School Board Association, they'll say category, recommended or required by law, or whatever it is. So that way they're, yeah, so that way you know when you're looking at policies what they are.
Good.
Thank you.
Want a few more, Mary?
Okay, just making sure. Um, policy DKA, payroll procedures. First reading.
Go ahead, Donna.
This one is just to adopt the New Hampshire School Board Association, clean up the policy, cause there's a language in here that we need to clean up.
Okay. Yeah.
I, I do have a question. Um, looking at the, the policy one forty-eight, there is a section in there that I was a little thrown by that says there will be no advanced salary for any staff members without a prior approval of the board. So I was just surprised that the board would do an advanced salary for anyone. So when, when I was looking at it, I'm thinking, that's probably not something that, I mean, if we look at the New Hampshire School Board Association, it says there will be no advanced salary for the staff members, and I just wanna make sure that the board's gonna be okay with that.
Is that like when the, um, when somebody comes to us and like, well, this person works really hard and we want them to have the raise this year and not for next year? Is that what that is?
No, we wanna pay them for work that they're going to do in the future.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. So we don't get paid for the two weeks that we.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it isn't, it is in the current policy and it's not in New Hampshire, and that's one that really stood out for me, and I didn't know if there was a reason that the board had that in there. I just, I thought it was.
It's been back twenty-five years, so I don't know.
Ask Priscilla.
So. It was before me.
Your name's on it.
Chair.
You're the chairman.
What page?
One forty-eight.
I'm guilty, and don't ask me why.
So, yeah, I think it's just adopt the NHSBA one.
Yeah. And policy LA, first reading, inter-organization relations.
So the only change with this one, we were gonna adopt the NHSBA one, but really they're the same. Except the formatting, it's, it's, it's like a dip, theirs is a clearer formatting than ours is.
Yeah, like wording.
In the first paragraph.
I mean, it's optional, so.
Is a little different. I think theirs reads a little more clearly in that first paragraph.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm all for using them, they're a bunch of attorneys that, that's their job to create these things.
Job. I know we're flying, but I would like to make a motion to re- to waive the second reading on this one.
That's second.
Did you say second?
I did.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so I would like to make a motion to approve policy LA with the changes from the NHSBA. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy LEB, advanced coursework slash advanced placement courses, first reading.
Questions on that? Alright. That fits your policies.
Wow. Thanks, everyone. That was a.
And just so you know, this is the shorter list out of all of them.
Bring it on. Don't worry, we're gonna try to come in prepared.
Alright, nomination, I, presentations.
We just have the two new hired FYI paraprofessionals.
Signed off, oh, yeah, right there.
Follow-up. Bubble comment. I don't know why I just saw you. Do we have a non-public?
We do not have a non-public, but I'd like to do a non-meeting that has to do with discussion with our attorney.
Okay, so, I just see also?
It would be under nothing, cause it's a non-meeting, so it doesn't have to be under anything, so we can adjourn this meeting and do a non-meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Heather did.